This is why this has been brought up. Is we, the attorney was here and she said she would bring up what other townships had for camping. Uh, different, how they have camping, how they don't have camp, how they regulate camping. That's what it brought to us. Well, then it's gotten ballooned by the amount of people that are here on what that we're gonna adopt this as it all is stated. And that is the same thing, I've been on here the longest time, ten years of land commission. It's the same thing that happened with the wind and solar. I feel, I mean, it's just like you're attacking our character for one thing that's came in here without. I mean, and finally when the wind and solar got through, people all came, were gonna come to the meetings. And I'll tell you, I come, I'm on the township board too. And by the faces that are in this room, there's only very few that I see come to township board meeting. And this is all talked about between both meetings. It's been over a year about, we've been working on this stuff. And that's what it degrades our character being up here, that we get attacked, that we're gonna pass this certain thing. And it's listed in the newspaper, it's listed online, there was mailing sent out. There is no excuse why it's not been shown, because my parents aren't on Facebook, none of that, they see it in the paper. That's, if you, it's, we, we changed it to where it was just the enterprise, now we do it to daily news both. We, we're paying for both of them, they're in Baltimore. So there's no, that's what by the legal terms, we have to turn, the attorney agrees as long as it's in the paper. That is when, the only time it has to be sent to neighboring, is when you do go back to the variance. Then it's sent to the neighboring people. Other than that, it's put on there, so that's what the attorney told us too. People need to come to these meetings, that's how they get informed on it. I mean, for wind and solar, we stuck our backs out for you guys on the lake. And then here, as soon as one thing comes back to us, it's not. I mean, that's where it really gets to me, and guess, I know guess more of us is, that's why it's published where it is. And that's, you have to find it there, but I mean, that is the whole reason why this is all brought up on what is the example of. And I mean, it's all come back, you can hear the public comment, we're gonna, you know, jam camping down their throats. So it's not, this is just what the attorney, and that's what the public hearing is for, is to listen. Then we can make changes to this, and then we, then we take it, I take it to the township board. And then the township board can still make changes if need be, and then brought back, and then it, then it's final. But I mean, until then, that's what gets me so bad is one, I mean, it takes one person to do this and then say this is boom, what's gonna happen? And it just balloons.
How true is it?
No.
Well, and along with other questioning, um, the reason why we even entertain camping in any zone. And I expressed, if we're gonna make a camping ordinance, it shouldn't just be for Lake, like Lakeside Residential, it should be for all residential. Um, we talked to Dave Kelsey himself. Right now, we have a fourteen day restriction. It's unenforceable. He has to physically go and see them every day for fourteen days in a row and document it, so he can go in front of the magistrate and actually write a ticket. That, we can't expect him to do that. Nobody, so, part of all of the other parts that we're trying to introduce into this regulated camping is to address, let's be fair to the people. I feel like, hey, if I bought a lot on a lake, I'd love to take my bus down and enjoy it for a weekend. Great. Where's the line? We gotta pick a line as a commission, how do we enforce it? How is it going to be enforceable? What's fair for people that live on the lake, what's fair for people that own the property? We have a lot of things to go over before anything's even close to being final. And we absolutely hear you guys, we absolutely hear. I have all three examples on my list. I have somebody that has a beautiful new camper, um, they have a shed, they have a concrete pad, a well, septic, all brand new. He rents it out, it's beautiful. Affects us in no negative way. My neighbor across the road, he has three campers that he stores long term, he doesn't even live there. There's a residence on the property, he lives somewhere else, doesn't affect me, doesn't affect the neighbors. Then we have some people down the road that are, have been living in their campers, about five of them for the last year and a half. And again, Dave can't do anything about it, he tries. And they're the ones that I have the issue with, they have dogs, they have trash everywhere, but, I mean, I keep hearing they're gonna move on, they got a new house to move into, but I haven't seen it yet. So, I, I, I have all three examples, but how do we regulate? We would all hope that everybody in Cato Township would be people that wanna enjoy the lake and clean up after themselves. Unfortunately, Ron, I will tell you, if those are the kind of people that are living there and they're loud and noisy, the campers aren't what's causing it. They could build a house there and they could still be that kind of a terrible neighbor. I can't regulate people's behavior.
But a house isn't gonna reduce my property.
No, it won't, and I, again, that's, that's where these lines come in, come into play. You're, you're worrying about people's behavior, we can't dictate people's behavior.
I'm worried about three trailers.
And whoever put that wording in there.
We're not gonna do anything, Ron, I'm kidding, sorry, but we're just, as a commission, we're trying to answer some of your questions. We don't have to do this, people, but we're just trying to pound the waters and make you, or get you to understand what we do as a commission, as a planning commission. And we don't have the final say on this, we just had to come up with some, some ordinance, and we've worked with our attorney is what they have said. And we're trying to come through that, you know, process. But with that being said, Ron is the one that brought to us the concern about camping. So that's why we've kinda added that to this whole process. And if you look at the ordinance in front of you, that you grabbed it off the table, if you look at that, that number begins with a three X X, is that correct? The reason why is because that's gonna be in a different section of our ordinances. Has nothing to do with Lakeside Residential, but it does to a point when it comes to camping, because obviously, some lakes, people like to camp. Now, I can tell you, as an individual, when this was brought to my attention, my wife and I went for a drive, we drove around Tongline Lake. And boy, oh boy, did I see campers, I seen campers parked all over the place, I seen campers parked out to many houses from Rob and Patricia's. And some of them had all kinds of weeds growing up around them, so I know they've been there more than fourteen days, they've been there like all summer long. So, you all got more of a problem than just what us, we're trying to, to, to try to take care of. But sometime, I mean, obviously, you as a group of people that live on that lake, you, you're not enforcing it because you're not filing complaints with Dave. And somebody may ask, how do you enforce this? How do we enforce this, Joe? I'm gonna, I'm gonna put each one of my commissioners on the spot. Who enforces this? This guy over here, he, he does a lot of enforcement.
For it to go to court, I have to visually see that person day and night there, and I, I, you know, otherwise the magistrate will throw it out.
So we asked our attorney to come up with a permit when it comes to camping, and I think she came up with a pretty good permit, to be honest with you. You may not like the permit, but it's a permit that obviously, that we can enforce as a, as a township when it comes to that, because they didn't give a permit. And that's another issue, so on so forth. But obviously, they have to have the owner's name and who they allowed to camp on that spot, and so on so forth, so. Um, but that's gonna be used for other things too, so, with that being said, so, I think, I think, I mean, hopefully we've answered all the questions, I think. That I wrote down here over the few minutes that, I mean, hour, I think, I don't know how long we've been here.
Hour fifteen.
Hour fifteen minutes, um, and our meeting should have lived with fifteen minutes ago, but, um, I think we, we answered all your questions, I believe. And if I did, I guess I apologize, but if you can raise your hand really quick.
I, I know there's one.
Is there one more, I'm sorry?
Well, that applies not to the camping part, to what we were doing for the public hearing. Jenny had a good point, that the minimum lot width is already larger than current lots, what happens if somebody?
Understand, and that's why, including your packet, the honeymoon heights.
Yeah, I think we might need to address that.
Y'all got the honeymoon heights.
I do have a question, just quickly. Uh, I think we were all uniform in hearing what our feelings are. But we have regulations now that are difficult to enforce, as you just indicated.
That's, that's you guys' problem is honeymoon heights, that's not our problem.
Understand, they're difficult to enforce. If you change to this new procedure or ordinance, it opens it up, so they give some latitude, more latitude than they have today.
No, because we're not voting on that today, that's.
That's not the process.
Didn't know that, that's fine, I understand.
That's not the process, the process is, is that we went through, to her point, as far as we did our master plan. And then that master plan, obviously, is, I mean, I'm just repeating, maybe somebody didn't hear it, but, you know, we decided as a, as a, as a township to, to add Lakeside Residential. Because to, to Ron's point, if you read in there, we want to value that, if you will. And we already have honeymoon heights that has some, some guidelines out there, do we not? We do, so with that being said, um, we have to, we have to watch that whole piece there. And when we get to the point where we're gonna incorporate that into our Lakeside Residential, every resident in honeymoon heights will get, will, will get a letter from Cato Township saying, hey, just so you know, we're gonna be talking about this subject out there, but we're not even to that point yet. We're, right now, we're at the point of developing a Lakeside Residential ordinance for Cato Township. And so people are jumping to some conclusions, because, hate to tell you, y'all don't understand the whole process. So, we're working towards that whole process, and when it comes time to bring in honeymoon heights, we'll bring those residents in, they all get letters, just like they did when we did a master plan. There was, there was a, a postcard sent out to every resident in Cato Township. Every resident, they had an address, got that. They did, trust me, they did. So with that being said, you know, we had an open house, we had a public hearing that talked about this whole process. So, I'm sorry you didn't, you didn't get it, didn't hear about it, but, you know, I can only communicate so many different ways, whether it be on Facebook, you know, whether it be, um, I don't know. YouTube videos, that this young lady takes the time to do, that she doesn't have to do. Um, we put it in the newspapers, uh, two, two of them, we added the Greenville. So, you can get newspapers, but you can get them online, if you wanna get them online, you can still see the same stuff. I mean, I can't, can't, I can put the ball in front of you, but I can't make you, make you spoon it in if you don't try to go out there and get some things. But we have a website, and the website is really updated to this point, as it is today, because we've, we've come much further in the last probably five years, four years, when it comes to that, so. Hopefully I've answered your questions, but we have some business that we gotta do, with that being said, okay? So, commission. Um, let's go back to the Lakeside Residential. Um, I guess I'll start at the top, section nineteen, the purpose, feel good with that?
The only I'm wondering is, um, I've wondered about, you know, calling it the lakefront and shoreline properties here, designated boundary area or else? And the middle where, yeah, the sentence says, it is the intent of the district to provide regulations on lands located along the lakefront and shoreline areas of the township. And lands within the boundaries of the district, because when we draw our lines in there, it might not be just who's touching the lake, it could be the bound, whatever boundary it makes to that. I think we need to add that type, or terminology in that sentence. Anybody agreeing?
I don't disagree.
So after the township, um, add the statement, and lands within the boundaries?
As the district, or of the district.
Of the district.
You get that, Jenny?
So, you're talking the second sentence there, the intent of the district, and then regulations, so after township, what?
And lands within the bounty, boundary?
Boundaries of the district.
Boundaries of the district. And lands within the boundaries of the district, period.
And then that, so then that blank is the entire proposed district, and then I'll make, make it, or, there's no question.
You, you all have a problem with the word lakefront in, coming here, so, the district is called, is called Lakeside Residential. In this particular paragraph, we use lakefront a couple different times, should that be lakeside or lakefront? It means the same thing, can we have definitions with that?
I don't think we've added it in our definitions, but we could just pick one and go with it. I don't think they're interchangeable language.
We could just set it as a definition, like, okay. So section two point oh three, take it to the very end. Lakeside, lakefront.
So we're adding definitely for lakeside and lakefront?
Yeah, leaving the city.
Like Dave was talking about on Lakeside Residential, if I understood him right, it might be, not be lakefront, right on the lakeside. It might be right across the street, but in some situations, it may end up being Lake Residential District there.
Cause maybe there's a road there or something?
Yeah, so, so it wouldn't be lakeside. It might just be Lake Residential District, and then wherever you guys put your lines on that.
Charlie's good with nineteen point oh? Nineteen point oh one, permitted uses?
If we make this pass today, line five still is kinda null and void until we add three point X X in the future, so we still wanna leave that in there for now, or?
Um, I think so, I mean, in my opinion, I think we do, because I do believe that, you know, if, if, if I'm a lake owner and I want the, the grandkids or the kids to come up and stay, um, we still gotta have something in there when it comes to camping.
I, I'm in the same boat, I just didn't wanna jump the gun and have more issues, but it's easier to pass it now with no, no terms, and then finalize terms for it.
Yep, okay. Anybody else? Nineteen oh two, special uses?
I, I think we need to add number nine, make it public or private campground on that.
Cause there's already campgrounds?
Yes.
And I'm helping, so we'll cover them?
Yes. You get that, Jenny? If everybody agrees, I mean, it's.
I get it. Nineteen oh three, schedule of lakeside residential district regulations. Um, this quickly, one of these lakeside setback. Twenty-five feet. Now honeymoon heights currently today, they have twenty-five foot setbacks, or twenty-four, I mean, no, twenty-five.
This is, this is my, yeah, this is my opinion, I think, what I'm seeing in hearing now and what I've done my homework, I think, my personal opinion is, whatever honeymoon heights has. Changing on here is what I'm thinking, so it might, yes, or no, it's easy for Dave to enforce, and I keep looking it up at one, one third. Because if you do look at the lots, they're close.
Let's go through each one of them, though, so there's a twenty-five, also, ours, we already had it said twenty-five, so everybody agree?
Yep.
Side yard setbacks. Um, honeymoon has five feet, we put seven feet, but also in honeymoon, um, it refers that they own two lots, that's ten feet. And we do have some residents that are not in honeymoon heights that are on the lake that are single lots and we have double lots. And if I remember it properly, uh, um, a single lot, um, I wanna say cut in the road, uh, Ron, if I can pick your brain here, is thirty-three feet, correct?
Thirty-three point two.
Yep, which comes up to be a little above over sixty-six feet, if they have a double lot, so. So do we wanna go, leave it seven, or turn it five feet?
Yeah, I would say.
Joe, five feet?
Because now, Joe.
But we don't have anything on here that goes two lots, though, so we're gonna add a line there, it's a double lot.
Yep, so make, make it, make a match, like you said, clean it up.
Five feet, if you own a single lot, isn't very far from the lot line for your neighbor. I mean, so you got ten feet between two buildings, correct?
Yep. But most of the lots around the lake are smaller than, I mean, nor in Lake Residential.
Okay.
Otherwise, yes, Phil, I agree, but this is Lake Residential. Good, yeah?
Um, roadside setback, so this will be the backyard.
So is that double lot gonna be ten feet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Fifteen feet? Um, no, um.
Twenty-five, is that what I'm thinking?
Yeah. This is much more of the front line.
Yep, front is twenty-five.
Number seven down there, I think.
Yeah, seven second.
At the very end, it talks about the, uh, required backline, lot line clearance, that one is ten feet. That's a double lot, more than one lot.
So it's?
Four's five feet.
Oh, there it is, five feet, is there, and then ten feet if it's a double lot.
So I mean, to just think about that, though, when it comes to, okay, you have five feet from your building, from, from the roadside from your back of the building, where's the person that parked?
If they don't have a garage, I mean.
We have a single lot. Five feet gonna be long enough, how many cars are five feet long?
Maybe five or wide. I mean, fifteen was short, I mean, if somebody had a crew cab on that truck.
Well, I mean, that's just, I'm just giving an example, but I mean, you know, we, we do have, you know, twenty-five feet from the, the lakeside. And. Most lots on honeymoon heights, can I ask the public that question? Judy, do you know?
I have to look it up. I have to look it up. Size of the lot, are you talking about? Average is sixty foot.
Yeah.
For honeymoon heights. Sixty foot of road frontage.
Yeah, no, there's sixty.
Sixty.
Sixty?
Yeah.
Is that road frontage, or is that, that?
That's road frontage.
That must've been a pretty common number, cause that's how all the lake forest subdivisions do, it's all sixty point oh one feet, but most people have double lots. There's a few singles, but.
They usually go sixty by hundred and twenty, a lot of them.
That's exactly what we have.
So.
Depending on the lakefront, but.
What do y'all think?
So currently, I mean, the rear setback for non-lakefront lots, that currently is five. And where front is twenty-five for Cato and honeymoon heights, is that right? Is there a written down? So, if we're gonna copy honeymoon heights, we're going to twenty-five. Currently, we're at five for.
We have it set here as fifteen, so.
Well, I think currently, honeymoon height is five.
Yeah, I'm talking about what we have printed here.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Fifteen, I think maybe that was a, kind of the middle ground between what we currently have for, for residential and what.
So it's five feet, five feet, figure it out?
I don't think five feet is, but.
That's why, I guess I brought it up.
I, I think I'm setting right what's printed, that's fifteen feet, the middle ground.
So if you're fifteen feet on the backside, you're twenty-five feet on the front side.
Just take about forty feet, but that's probably one hundred and twenty foot long lot, that's plenty of room for that. But it ensures anybody building something new has to park a car.
Have a fifteen foot.
Yeah, I mean, twenty-five gives you to park any car, but fifteen would give you something, if we're ten, I mean.
I mean, part of that goes under the lot.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm doing it fifty.
Does it start at the road right away, though? You're, they start at the road right away, and then go on to the lot?
And obviously, all of these are subject to variances of, of needed. Some, some lots might have a hill that you can't follow this.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so fifteen there, uh, building heights, we have thirty-five feet, two and a half stories.
Same thing as honeymoon heights.
Real tall, big? Uh, lot coverage?
Honeymoon heights is fifty.
And I think, yeah, I think thirty-five was applying more to the, what we have in our other zones. We might wanna work in that increasing kind of because.
Fifty, I'm gonna make it.
Big, fifty?
Yeah.
Uh, minimum area?
Honeymoon heights is seventy-two hundred. With public, well, it doesn't matter, but with it, we're at seventy-two hundred square feet.
Yeah, that's what, their average is sixty by one twenty, seventy-two hundred, so.
So let's change this to seventy-two hundred. That doesn't matter, you don't follow.
Joe, is that? And then, uh, width?
There, there's.
Sixty.
Yeah, we can't do. We made it seventy-five, exclude every lot, that's already been excluded, so sixty puts it back in different plans.
Well, we're not trying to.
Right, and then, uh.
We have a seven fifty. They have one story as a, and above one story, ground floor area no less than six hundred square feet.
All right, we're talking about changing all of that in the future, you know?
Will we be copying that?
I would, yeah.
Okay.
The one story is seven fifty, more than one is ground four, no less than six hundred, get that, Jake, here, that'd be fast.
Seven fifty squared, what other for one story? And six hundred?
Six hundred if it's above it, yeah, seven fifty for one, with the ground four and no less than six hundred.
So ground four, six hundred, minimum, right?
Yep.
More than one story?
Yes. Seven fifty, one story is correct, first is sixty-six hundred.
Seven fifty? So everybody all set with that, then?
What was the lot coverage changed to?
Fifty for seventy-two hundred. Oh, percentage was fifty, fifty percent.
Any other additions there? I know they talked a little bit about pitches on the books. Anything to add down there, or?
I don't know, I think that's building code. Now. I think we're.
You get one, so far?
Yeah.
So good on that, with that?
Yes.
Big?
Yes, do any, I, I, I love many casher doms, or? I think as long as I follow them, the guidelines.
Yeah, follows everything you do.
And Dylan tells me cover foundation and.
Okay, three X X?
That's what I, should this apply only to Lake LR District, or all residential districts?
Well. I mean, it was brought to our attention, and we don't, the only thing we have out there is a fourteen day. And I know Dave has been dealing with that as far as, over the years, but.
Yeah, there's been a few complaints, but it's hard.
So that's why. Well, I think, I think we need to have something on the books, I guess, my personal opinion when it comes to camping on those lots. And, and I think we've heard some comments tonight that, you know, there's campers that are, that are there, that have been there. on those lots, and, and I think we've heard some comments tonight that, you know, there's, there's campers that are, they're there, they're paying that, that don't move. I mean, they're stored there, I think, all the time. It sounds like there's some people that are upset about that. On top of just, I mean, I think the vacant lots, um, number two is another subject. But, I mean, do we want something out there when it comes to? General overview?
I, I think it should apply, I mean, I don't know how anybody else feels, but it shouldn't be just, just for lakefront residential.
Their township?
All of our zoning districts that come out.
Just for like ads, you have some people may own property here, and during, uh, hunting season and all of that, they may wanna park it. I don't know how long, uh, season.
And I, and I feel like, that you could put something in there that said, you know, lots over a certain thing, it's not really an issue. I mean, this is more of an issue when you're in the tight quarters of, so, do we write one specific for lakefront and then have one that correlates to the rest of our property? I mean, the, so, the section three in our ordinance is its own section alone.
Yes, it is.
In general provisions, so. We can, so instead of saying, they should just apparently say, this is what our camping terms are, and then we could have, you know, number two would be. Yeah.
Is the one that we have.
Camping on vacant land, camp, camping on lakefront residential, you know, number one would be this one, number two would be this one. Camping on developed properties, developed land, I mean, I don't know how far we wanted to go into it, I know that, like I said.
I think the board has asked us to a, address this, correct?
Yeah.
And we need to have something on the books when it comes to, to camping, because it's been very hard to enforce. Um, and being that we're having this public hearing and we want to try to regulate about lakeside, there's no better time to update that than this. So I think we need to have a three point XX, so we'll give it a number, but, I mean, we, we need to have something on the books. I guess to answer your question. So, yes, we wanna purge forward with this, so, um, to start out with this, obviously it talks about general standards. What, what is allowed as a vehicle, and whether it be motorhome pickup camper, pickup, uh, four week tents, a tent, or travel trailers, I mean, I think we're all good with what, or are we, we're all good with what is allowed? I mean, is all right, can we purge forward on this, yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay.